I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 19th, 2016 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order. At this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under physical, equal and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion while respecting each other's opinions in order to nurture the bonds within this community. Continue to remind us all, we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walls?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Present.
Commissioner Duckham?
Present.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
And Chairman Shatwell?
Here.
All present.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion and support. Any items for removal? Any additions? Commissioner Elwell.
On the consent agenda, I'd like to pull item 9C.
I'm going to ask politely that when we get to approval of the consent agenda, you do that, but it will be duly noted. Any items from the general agenda? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards and recognition this evening. I'm going to ask for a motion to accept a flyer presented to the clerk by David Van Hoof. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. Any other communications or petitions to be presented to the board this evening? Seeing nor hearing none, we have no special orders, and no public hearings this evening. We have arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines, each individual will state their name. You have five minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. The board members will not debate nor answer questions, and if you would like an answer, please submit it to the Deputy Administrator on my far left. First opportunity for public comment.
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself. My name's David Van Hoof. I'm a resident of Hanover Township, and I'm putting myself forward as a candidate for the position of County Treasurer. My family has been a resident of Jackson County since 1973. My father, a retired naval officer, came to Jackson and served with Consumers Energy in the position of a nuclear engineer, where he retired after additional 20 years. Grew up in Jackson County. I went to the local parochial schools and graduated from Lumen Christie, and then subsequently went on to the University of Michigan and Detroit College of Law. Upon passing the bar, I enlisted in the Marine Corps. Served in the Marine Corps for 22 years, both enlisted and in commissioned ranks. I have an extensive experience in engineering, contracting, logistics, procurement, civil affairs. In the Marine Corps, I served two years in Iraq, two tours in Afghanistan, and a tour in Sierra Leone. In my last tour in Afghanistan, I served as a civil affairs engineer officer, establishing governance, rule of law, and stability in a remote district, northern Helmand. It was at that deployment I got injured and subsequently retired from the Marine Corps with 22 years. Since my return, I've assisted Judge Susan Beebe with her treatment court, helping mentor veterans that are going through that program, and also I have served on the Jackson Advisory Council on the aging. The one big thing that I think I bring to, from my experience in the military, to my jobs in the civilian sector, is communication. Every service member will tell you that they're trained to constantly communicate, and it's communication, not bullets, that win battles. And so on that, I hope to in the near future meet with each one of you on an individual basis, and hopefully learn from you how I can assist you in better serving the citizens of Jackson County. Again, thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. Appreciate it much.
Any other public comment?
Peter Bormuth, as you know, our governor is giving a State of the Union address tonight, and obviously the Flint water crisis plays a large role in what he's going to have to say. I'd like to point out that it's not just in Flint that the governor's DEQ and other administrative agencies have failed our people to safeguard our people's health. Here in Jackson County, you operated the Jackson County Resource Recovery Facility for almost 20 years without testing of the effluent that went into the Blackman Township sewer system and then into the city of Jackson wastewater treatment plant before being dumped into the Grand River. There were 65,000 gallons a day of ash quench water that went through that system. And one of the things I found out just this last meeting of the city council was that during that entire period, they were selling that sludge, and it was being spread on our farm fields here in Jackson County, and also in neighboring counties' farm fields. I find that extraordinarily potentially damaging. We might have been putting dioxins on our farmland. Also, here in Jackson County, and the DEQ did not require you to test. I understand that you did not have to do that. That was a failure by the DEQ. Another failure by the DEQ is that we have two oil waste injection wells that have been permitted out in the Brooklyn area. These oil waste injection wells are being put at a level 2,600 feet deep where they say a cap of anhydrite will stop the effluent from migrating upwards. Anhydrite means without water. Anhydrite, if you know your Latin. And what happens when you expose anhydrite to water is that it absorbs it and turns to gypsum and dissolves. Gypsum is the second softest mineral we know. So there is a very large possibility that these oil waste injection wells, and there are 19 others that I've identified through the southern Michigan basin, are going to release this oil field brine containing benzene and other toxic chemicals up into our sources of drinking water. And finally, throughout the state, but definitely here in the university region, the Michigan Department of Transportation is spraying Agent Orange on our road sides to control weeds on our highways instead of mowing. These systematic failures by the Republican administration to protect our people's health and to expose people to toxic chemicals and endanger our water and our farmlands and our public lands are a sad commentary on the State of the Union.
Seeing none, public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings or standing committees. We've arrived at the minutes of the December 15th, 2015 meeting. A motion for approval? We have a motion and support. Any corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes of the 2015 meeting? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda, please. We have a motion and support. Commissioner Elwell. Yes, we will. Item 9C becomes item 13C. Any other items for removal for discussion later? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you post the vote so we may have a roll call on the amended consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, he approves. animals? We've now arrived at standing committee reports. Standing Committee of Affairs and Agency is chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First up, we have one appointment. It's to the Hospital Finance Authority. The current member is Tony Salmon. He's the applicant, and he's also the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor appointing Tony Sammons? Say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. Mr. Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is the 911 fee for the May ballot proposal, and I'll turn it over to the Administrator.
Well, I'm assuming everyone approves the language, is comfortable with the change. If that is the case, I would ask that you vote to approve that and move it forward so that we can go ahead and submit it to the state and move forward with the measure.
I would so move, and then I have a comment after a support.
Commissioner Elwell has made the motion. Support by Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Elwell.
When it came out of committee, there was substantial discussion about the issue of radios and other equipment. Should the proposal pass, that would be provided to local police and fire agencies. I was a little uncomfortable, as I think others were, about the language we had there about departments asking for grants, and I believe that it should be a given that if the proposal passes, that the equipment should be provided to agencies, radios, MDCs, to do their jobs of being sent on calls through 911. And when we sent it out of committee, we asked the Administrator to tweak the language. He did. I reviewed it. I recognize that it can't speak to everything, but I think, although it's somewhat general, it does speak to that, and it's clearly the intent, I think, of this board to provide that if the proposal passes, and that's why I do support it.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the increase to $1.50 on the surcharge, I certainly support the idea of allowing the voters to make a decision on this. I would just encourage that the voters would educate themselves. Obviously, this is coming up in May. Obviously, May is a time when typically there's not the number of voters that are going to be at the polls as would be potentially in August or November, but I would hope that you would educate yourself. Another thing that's a little bit concerning to me on this matter is that I've had several other conversations with Lenawee County, and as probably most people know, they passed a resolution going, and on their May ballot, it's going to $3. That's what they're going to be asking the voters for over in Lenawee County. Right now, it's $1.18. But one of the things that was a little bit different than what was presented here is that the Kimball study was very instrumental in their decision in Lenawee County. The quote from very reliable people over there that I talked to, their quote was that the Kimball study was "right on target." They felt the financials were right on target. They mentioned the fact that even though they wanted to be fiscally responsible, the fact that two counties paid about $1,000 a page to get the study back, the study helped them make the decision to pursue this. It also helped them, their words, helped them realize that they needed to go this alone. So again, I know we were told during the presentation that this is more of a national average and so on and so forth, but I found it quite intriguing that Lenawee County thought just the opposite, and they thought the study was, again, quite thorough. So I just want everybody to, again, do their homework. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next is the item pulled from the consent agenda being the contract for contracting with the sheriff for Grass Lake Township and Village, and I would so move, and then I have comments.
Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've had issues with the contract since we passed it through committee, mainly with the numbers. I will be voting for it in the end. I've had continued discussions with the Administrator on it, and I received information from the Administrator, from Jim Latham, on numbers. And I took the time to look back through all the contracts that we did, and I sent, again, Commissioners an email about quarter to seven at night with many of my thoughts in it, and I copied and pasted Mike and Jim's math into the email that I sent you where I gave you reasons for it. I, again, support doing this, but I think it's important for all of us to fully understand the math on it. It's my opinion, it's pretty clear that the amount we're approving does not support the cost that it's going to be to the county to provide that service, to have a dedicated deputy in Grass Lake Township and Village for the hours they're contracting. There are a number of items that Mike and Jim covered in the numbers, but there's a number of things that are absent as well, and I listed those in the document that I sent to you, which include contractual PTO time for the deputy, fuel for the patrol car vehicle maintenance, the patrol car itself, equipment for the patrol car, uniforms for the deputy, contractual shift differential that we have to pay, court overtime, holiday pay, secretarial expenses, and many other things. Those are all types of things that I think when the Administrator typically brings us a contracting package for some element of governmental contracting, he's pretty thorough, and so is Jim, in telling us everything that it costs us. That's not the case with this, and I wish with hindsight and with foresight from this point forward, we have the Administrator's office bring us those numbers on what the full expenses are. I personally, again, would support doing it, even if we have to supplement it to a point, but I think all of us here should have open eyes and know what that is costing us. You know, we're in a time when last year we made significant cuts to the budget, cutting back deputies on general patrol for the rest of the county, and in this case, in my opinion, we're providing a contract that does not fully get reimbursement from the people that we're contracting with. So I think we should know that going into it. Again, still vote for it. And I did look back on one of the two or three-page documents we got when we looked at this proposal, which says, and I partially quote, "which provides full cost reimbursement for these services." As you'll note in your email, I went back and looked at the contracts for Norval, Concord, and then Grass Lake. The Norval contract was in March of 2015, and I think it's pretty common sense that we can break them all down to an hourly rate because they're all the same thing, different hours, but per hour, it shouldn't matter. Norval in March of 15 was $34.69 an hour. The Concord contract after that in July was $36.05 an hour, and now we're proposing doing Grass Lake for $33.25 an hour, providing really the same services, different amount of hours, but that shouldn't matter. And that bothersome to me that we're all over the map and really not including all the expenses that come with this contract, but I just wanted to make that clear that I think it's our job to know those numbers before we vote. Thank you.
Commissioners? Commissioner Alexander?
In looking at the information presented to us, the issue is the contract, not the employee assigned to the duty. So looking at the contract, we realize this five-year contract will bring in more money than previous contracts with Grass Lake Township and Village. Although it is not at the same level the other townships and villages have, we are making progress and moving forward. I'm pleased that you will be supportive of this, and I, for the sake of Grass Lake Township and Village, I'm pleased that we can work collaboratively with them.
Ready?
A little bit of history that maybe Mr. Elwell hasn't brought forward to us is that years ago, it was back in the early 80s when Sheriff Savzilak was sheriff, and the village of Grass Lake had their own police officers department, and found that it wasn't lucrative for them to maintain that type of coverage for the village. Mr. Savzilak got together with the village president and explained that they would like to have coverage on the east side of Jackson County, and was willing to share if Grass Lake would help cover some costs. That was the original agreement. And ever since come forward, and during my presidency, we understand and realize that the contract was nowhere near up to par, and made increases as the budget allow every year after there. This being the very first year that the township, although we've invited them on several occasions to join with us and share the costs, this is the very first year that they've done that. The increases, if you look at the contract, show that it makes an increase every year to get it to where it needs to be. So just a little background so that you understand.
Commissioner Elwell.
I appreciate that. I do actually remember the officer that worked Grass Lake Village back in 1980, his name was Kevin Summers, 80 or 81, I think. So I do remember the history of that. I do appreciate it, and I do appreciate the fact that we're working towards getting full expenses recovered, but don't tell me in a document that this contract fully recovers the expenses when it doesn't. I'm okay, you know, bearing some of that burden as the county. I just want to make sure that we all understand what the numbers are and what we're doing, especially at a time when we're cutting other things. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
We ready to vote? Madam Clerk, could you post the vote? Motion carries. Contract passes 8-1. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have to report.
Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Julie Alexander. Commissioner Alexander.
Human Services Committee has no business to bring before the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by Vice Chairman Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item of business tonight. That would be the first reading of the 2015 and 2016 Health Department Fee Schedule.
Was that the first reading? Do we need a motion here, Adam? No? Please let that reading be entered into the minutes. Unfinished business. Any unfinished business to come before the board? Seeing nor hearing none, new business. Administrator Controller, Spring Arbor Bond. Administrator Overton.
Thank you. Tonight, we have, frankly, a joyous occasion. Spring Arbor Township had entered into a bond contract with the county to fund some water improvements back in 2005. They are seeking permission to basically pay it off early, to make a $255,000 payment with the next bond call, which would be eligible April 1st. So really what it comes down to in the bond agreement, it says that the county needs to approve of them paying it off early, and that's what we're asking with this motion here, this resolution.
Any questions of the Administrator before we go to the resolution?
Would you make a motion to approve this resolution?
We have a motion and support. Any questions? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. We've now arrived, is there any other new business to be brought before the board? Seeing nor hearing none, we've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. Each individual will state their name. You have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members may not debate nor answer questions at this time. Second opportunity for public comment. Second opportunity for public comment. Public comment is now closed. We have no, any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Just want to let everybody know that there is a family who has stepped up to the plate to try to help the city of Flint. They're doing a water drive. I know there's quite a few places who are now doing this. We actually did it last week. They, out of their own pocket, rented a U-Haul and are filling the U-Haul with cases of water and taking it up to the Catholic charity to be dispersed throughout the city of Flint. If you're interested in helping out, they will be posted at the Shell gas station on West Ave, and that is located right outside the Pecop Plaza. You'll see a big U-Haul, and hopefully a bunch of people putting waters in it. Last week, we were actually able to fill the entire U-Haul and take it up to the city of Flint. As I stated earlier, the same thing could happen here, and we'll be looking for help. So I think that if you're able to help, we should help by a case of water. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Mahoney, I appreciate you saying that. I'd like also to let everybody know here in Jackson that Lifeway CMH is also doing the water drive. Matter of fact, all the CMHs in the state of Michigan are collecting water and donations for the city of Flint. So that's another place that you could drop off your water donations and what have you is Lifeway's. And again, any CMH in the state of Michigan is also doing the same thing, which is obviously pretty awesome, so.
Any other Commissioner Leitner?
This isn't Flint-related, but that's great. January 24th, which is Sunday, is the K-105 Chili Cook-Off. It's from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Fairgrounds. And also on Monday, January 25th, we're going to be making announcement for entertainment with tickets going on sale on Saturday, January 30th.
Any other Commissioner comments? Any other commissioner comments? Seeing nor hearing none, your chairman would like to invite you on the 26th to Davis's Entertainment Center, uh, for the Conservation District Annual Dinner. Uh, if you need to, uh, get tickets or anything like that, you can contact myself or Lori Fitzgibbons, uh, and they would be happy to see us all there at their annual dinner. Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, we have no closed session at this time, so we will adjourn.